Okay, if you would join me in the pleasure of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We are here for the special meeting agenda, I mean, the special meeting and also the public hearing for the ports on 2023 budget. So we're going to recess the special meeting and open it for the public hearing on the port budget. So Larry, would you like to lead off with anything?
Sure. This is our 2023 draft budget. If you look at the documents, you'll notice in bar numbers, bars and numbers are missing. These will be provided by the county once we send the approved budget document to them. We finally did receive the property tax revenue and new construction numbers from the county last week, so this is what we foresee in 2023. As usual, we've adhered to our basic philosophy of budgeting revenue conservatively and expenses liberally. For purposes of this document, we use a 2023 property tax revenue total we received this week and added the allowable 1% to that number. The amount of new construction is slightly less than we received last year due to the way the county calculates this. However, it should be substantially more in 2024. One question we always get has to do with timber trust money. This is always an uncertain amount because of how it's calculated and distributed. For example, in 2018, we budgeted $10,000 and got over $87,000. Some of that was money we used to buy the truck and do some other things. However, the following year, we budgeted $10,000 and only got just over $5,000. 2022, we budgeted $10,000, and so far, we've received about $14,000. It's just not a revenue source we can depend on or predict, so we always budget it conservatively at $10,000. Anything over that, we consider to be a windfall. Because of the legal expense of the lawsuit, our cash flow position is very tight. We're paying the general fund back $35,000 of loan to Water Fund in 2020 for engineering associated with expansion planning and some of the other items for the new wells. We started on a 10-year master plan for the entire system, which we will complete in 2023. The Water Fund reimbursed the general fund $20,000 of that loan earlier this year, and we'll pay the other $15,000 back most likely in February, depending on cash flow needs. As you can see from the budget, the water system operates in the black, is very healthy, and in spite of previous charges, the general fund has never subsidized its operations. In our budget for 2023, we only budget revenue for an additional 12 connections, which is consistent with our philosophy of budgeting revenue conservatively. But even with just that, as you see, the Water Fund is a bright spot for us. For purposes of the credit line, we budgeted using $115,000 of it in 2023. Of that, $87,000 will go to the attorneys. Eighty-seven thousand five hundred, excuse me. We've negotiated the legal bill down from $195,000 to $135,000 with payments as follows: an $87,500 draw from the line of credit, three $5,000 payments for October, November, and December. Since we approved payments of last month's bills at the commission meeting on the first Monday of the month, means we just paid the October payment. We'll pay the November payment on December 6th, and December payment on January 10th. Our total legal bill currently owing is $128,000. With the $87.5 draw and two additional $5,000 payments, it will reduce to $29.5 by January. We'll pay the balance in $2,500 payments, with the last one being the December payment, which will be paid in January of 2024. We'll also pay any additional legal costs monthly as they are incurred. We've also identified two less expensive legal firms. The balance will be for potential operational needs throughout the year, carry us through to the end of April when we receive our next installment of property tax revenue. This is also usually about 65% of the total for the year. For this document, we've used $115,000 from the credit line to fill the projected shortfall, but that's just a placeholder until actual revenues start coming in. But before using the line of credit, we'll borrow from the Water Fund because by doing so, we will essentially be paying the interest on the amount we borrowed back to ourselves instead of to the bank. The good news on the revenue side is that due to estimating revenues conservatively, year-to-date, we've taken in $27,046.23 more than we budgeted with six weeks still to go. Managing expenses. Cut expenses to the bone, negotiated payment plan for our legal bills, as well as got our insurance company to agree to split our 2023 insurance premium, which is $37,685, into four payments, and we aren't spending any money for anything we don't need. Looking at the numbers, expenses exceeded our projections in a number of areas. This is the first time in the seven years that I've written a budget where this has been the case. But when you break it down, the most glaring issue is legal fees due to the lawsuit and insurance, which has increased by 30%. I spoke with a number of other port directors, and they're facing the same kinds of increases from our insurer in Duras. So it isn't just us, but it seems to be across the board for other parts, other ports, large and small, with and without claims. The next most costly increases were for utilities, electric in particular, and gas for both our truck and maintenance equipment: lawnmowers, power washer, chainsaw, hedge trimmer, leaf blower, weed whacker, et cetera. Since we own and operate two parks, two marinas, two boat launches, and a community water system, our maintenance equipment gets a lot of use. Cost of routine maintenance for all our utilities has also gone up significantly, as has computer and internet costs, as well as unbudgeted inflationary and cost increases from most of our suppliers. Other issues include payroll. Staff understands our financial position, and no one is expecting raises other than cost of living increases, and we're cutting one full-time employee to part-time. That person was only hired as a result of the lawsuit to keep the office running smoothly. Our operations manager is busy keeping up with the volume of public records requests we received as part of the lawsuit. Previously, we'd only received 16 public records requests in the last five years. I will be retiring sometime in 2023. Timing's somewhat uncertain right now, and primarily depends on my wife finding a buyer for her magazines, but I expect it to be sometime between mid-Q2 and early to mid-Q3. However, I will give the port plenty of notice once things become more certain. My employment contract requires 30-day notice, so I will have my replacement identified before then and have a month to work with him or her and get them up to speed on everything. I've added a budget category for our new executive director for one month, the salary costs that reflect my 2023 rate of pay. If you hire someone for less, those numbers go down proportionately. The expense number for technology looks high, but changing vendors recently has made this an all-inclusive cost instead of being spread across multiple line items and multiple vendors for equipment, hardware, software, and service calls for problems, which adds to non-productive labor costs as well. Also, Springbrook, our accounting vendor, represents a major cost increase, but it includes using their utility billing module, which will pay for itself and labor costs saved. Right now, we have to calculate the amount of water each customer uses based on the meter readings, do the math by hand according to our rates, physically prepare an invoice, receive the payment, physically post it in the Water Fund. As the system grows, and we project it doubling in size by mid-2024, this will just continue to drive up labor costs. The utility billing module will calculate the bills based on the meter reading, prepare the invoice, post the payment once we receive it. Debt service, use of and paying back the line of credit. Our expenses run between $40,000 and $50,000 a month, so the worst-case scenario looks like this. We'll need to draw the $87.5 for the down payment on our legal fees once the line of credit is open almost immediately. However, we don't project needing any more of it until late February, depending on cash flow, if then. We'll have enough with the October property tax payment to get us through then. If we collect the connection fees anticipated from the water company, we can borrow from there and pay ourselves back with interest, and maybe not need to draw as much on the line of credit, if at all. We also expect revenue to increase from the gazebo, more than we budgeted due to the increase in rates implemented this year. Sales slumped drastically during the pandemic. We only booked 10 weddings all year, but historically are booked every weekend for weddings between mid-May and Labor Day. Additionally, after a number of technology glitches, we now have all our electronic pay stations at the marinas and boat launches working correctly as well, so we should capture some additional revenue there. We attributed the drop-off in marina revenue to gas prices, people not putting five-plus-dollar a gallon gas in their boats. Although we did see a resurgence in our mortgage business late in the season. Once we collect property tax payments in late April, we'll be heading into our peak earnings season and should be positioned to begin paying back some of what we draw on the line of credit in June. Once we get through April, we should be able to completely recover by the end of 2023. Our existing line of credit, just to clarify this, our existing $100,000 line of credit is for use funding capital projects only, and it's basically an in-and-out process. We borrow from the line of credit, turn in invoices to the state, get reimbursed, pay back the line. The only reason we haven't paid anything at this point is we're waiting on approval letters from the two tribes in our jurisdiction. Once we have them, we can complete the contracts with the state for our grants to begin work. What we have used, line four, was funding some preliminary engineering work on our new well. Once tribe sign off, which we anticipate shortly, we'll be able to request reimbursements. We did get the sign off from Squaxen Tribe. I'm going to pick up the document tomorrow. And the Kukomish Tribe, they have 30-day window to respond to our solicitation, and they have not responded. So happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Questions from the public. Do you have Brad?
Please. Evening commissioners. Brad Carey here. First question I have is, I noticed John, Commissioner John Sheridan is not here tonight.
He's here on Zoom.
Oh, he is Zooming, okay.
Yeah, he's on Zoom right now.
Okay. I didn't hear you do roll call.
Well, we don't use him.
Okay. Well, a couple of things. One is, was this meeting advertised as a budget hearing as required by law?
Yes.
Okay. That's good to know. With regard to the director's report, he introduced in there, one of the major issues was the Carey lawsuit. That was my lawsuit against the port. So the concern I have is, if that's the main issue, we raised allegations of RCW 5308040 being violated. That's where the port was in the water business without consent and also spending general fund money on water issues. And we introduced that to the port many months before litigation was ever filed. And it was our objective to learn about what the port was doing and bring to the port's attention what we felt were deficiencies and violations of law. We made it clear to the port, we didn't want to sue the port, month after month. And so when I look at the director's report here tonight, as it relates to the 2023 budget and as he reflects back on the 2022 budget, he raises the issue that that litigation, which I filed on behalf of the water, the port being in the water business, as being a major problem. Now, I didn't sue the port and its general fund. I sued the port over here on its water business. Yet if you look at the port's budget, you'll see where they took those monies out of the general fund to pay the litigation cost for the independent water side of the port. So that, to me, is a problem. Okay? Now, as money's being spent over here from the general fund, it's being transferred over and used to pay the legal fees for the water side of the port activities. That's a big deal. Now, the question I have to ask myself, and I wasn't even going to come tonight and comment, but I looked at the October meeting minutes and video, and I read the director's report tonight, and we settled our litigation this year with the port, with the understanding that the port recognized and admitted to liability that it violated the Public Records Act, the Open Public Meetings Act, and my civil rights under freedom of speech in this very room with Mr. Sheridan. I guess the civil rights weren't in this very room, that was on a Zoom meeting. But we settled it because we thought the port recognized that it was the problem, not the public doing its obligation. See, I believe it's the public's obligation to hold its public agencies and public officials accountable, and it takes a lot of work for the public to do that. And in order to do that, we have to remain informed, and that's why we tried for almost a year to get informed. And so if the port were to take a look at its 2022 budget and 2023 budget, a lot of money was spent handling public records requests and subsequent litigation occurred because the records weren't produced, which the port ultimately admitted to liability on. We tried to ask questions of our commissioners. Go watch the videos. Those questions would not be answered. So we finally put in writing that we're going to have to ask the documents to answer those questions that our public officials are refusing to answer. So is it my fault, as an example, Mr. Carey, Mr. Brad Carey's fault for taking time to hold its public officials accountable and messing up the budget? Is it Mr. Carey's fault for going ahead and asking the commissioners questions so that he can be informed and others, so we can hold our public officials accountable? Is it Mr. Carey's fault, when he can't get answers to his questions, to then ask for those documents which will answer those questions, which is a pain in the neck for me, but to reduce those to writing, which you asked me to do yourself in writing, and I did, and then I was ignored? So we have to ask for then the documents. That's the public's only way of finding out what's going on. So we asked for those documents, and we are refusing those documents. And so when the director puts in his report tonight, which I feel is disparaging in what has happened in October as well, when he puts in there that because of the Carey lawsuit, the budget's all, you know, tight, I think what should be more fairly stated is because of the commissioners and the directors, the Port of Allen, failure to comply with the Public Records Act, which they admitted liability to on June 9th this year in writing, which you all signed. Because the Port of Allen's inability to comply with the Open Public Meetings Act, which they admitted liability on June 9th this year as part of the settlement agreement, that's why we settled. Which the Port of Allen admitted to violating our free speech rights, where they tried to control what we could and could not say during a public meeting, during our period of public comment, which they admitted to again fault, liability to. I think the director's report tonight that he presented to you should be amended to say it's not because of Mr. Carey's lawsuit. In fact, we are grateful of Mr. Carey's lawsuit to hold us accountable. He asked for the information in public meetings and couldn't get us, we wouldn't give him answers. He then asked for the documents that would answer those questions, and we refused to give him those public records. So then he finally filed a lawsuit against us, which he said he was going to do. And mind you, your attorney was CC'd on those before the lawsuit was even filed, and we waited and still couldn't get the records. So what do we do? We filed a lawsuit, but we still couldn't get the records. So going forward, I think it's important for the port to know that if the port's culturally not going to try to change its way to operate and be transparent, you might as well just shut the whole thing down, because I'm not going away, Mr. Van Busckirk's not going away, and there are many other people out there that are not going to go away. We want to hold our public agencies accountable, and to do that, we have to remain informed. And I'm pretty good at getting answers to information, and I had a tremendous difficult time, and I've been at this for 20 years. I spent two and a half years of my life working with this Port of Allen, trying to get information. That's all we wanted to. We made it clear we didn't want to sue, but we were forced into that position, but it gets better. We said, hey, okay, fine. We finally forced the production of that one document, which Washington Water, we didn't know what it was, Washington Water sent you a cease and desist letter. Every one of your commissioners got Federal Express to the office and emailed to your email address. We learned. That document said exactly what we'd been saying for almost a year, that you're violating the statute RCW 5308040. Okay? Now, the port denied it initially, we've learned, and then it turned around and apologized and said, yes, we must have made a mistake. Mr. Capola wrote that email to Washington Water. Okay, that's cool. But the point is, I'm not the only one complaining you're violating the statute, which again, your report tonight in the budget says that only one individual's complaining. Statute 53040.
Brad, may I ask a question?
Sure.
Now, I understand your complaint about us. We've always tried to be open book, open about everything, but can you ask questions about the budget specifically and not some of your...
Sure, I'll ask you. I am, first of all, I'm on subject matter right now, which is the budget, but I'll ask you a question. How much money did the port spend in defending the Carey lawsuit litigation?
Well, it's in there.
No, no, just ask the question, please. Because I looked at it, I couldn't find it.
It's $193.
$193,000 the port spent.
Right.
Is that true, Mr. Jackson?
I'm just looking it up right now, but I believe that's a correct number.
So that does not include the June $10,000 that you guys spent to try to convince me you weren't violating 5308, June of...
Well, you know, we could go into a lot of argument about this.
That's a big number, $10,000.
Can I comment on that?
Sure.
Sure.
The $14,000-something in the water budget that he's referring to, that was in the original lawsuit. He said we were in the water business illegally, and that's the money that it costs to deal with that issue, which he deleted from the lawsuit at a later date. But that's the money we spent on dealing with that portion of the lawsuit.
So to correct, it was $195, and it's been negotiated down to $135.
We'll get to that in a moment. So I knew Mr. Capola would come up with that answer tonight.
Okay.
Okay, so let me explain what he, and again, this is my complaint with the budget. What Mr. Capola's doing is he's conveniently taking money that was specifically, or bills, accounts payable, that should be specifically paid by that water side of the business, and using the general fund money. What he's doing is he's saying, well, Mr. Carey sued for 5308040, and he sued for public records violations, and he sued for civil rights violations, he sued for open public media. All those were stacked underneath the water side. What Mr. Capola's, he's shaking his head, let me finish, please. What Mr. Capola's doing, because I had never sued if there was no water issue violations. I requested water issue records. It all had to do with the water side of the equation. We can argue till the cows come home that it's a general fund issue, but it's not, and I knew this would come up. So what I'm going to say, I'm not going to argue it into the ground here, I'm just going to simply say, hey, my point is this, is that if the port would have gone ahead and assigned those monies to be paid by that water side, because that's why I sued. The port was in the water business, and they tried to eminent domain my brother's water system or talked about it, using eminent domain, and so I got involved. It's in the meetings. So because of that, I got involved, and that's how all these records requests came about, that's how all the legal fees came along, that all had to do with water. Had absolutely nothing to do with the way the port actually runs its administrative side of the equation. So anyway, let's move on and over that. So $193,000.
Well, I was correct, it was $195.
Okay, close enough, $190,000. Here's the part that concerns me. I've run several businesses, have for many years. I have fiduciary duty to turn a profit. I know you guys don't have that same responsibility, but you do have a duty to maintain your budget. My concern is this, is that you didn't have the money to carry on a legal, protracted legal battle. I knew that, you guys knew that. What you guys did was, you went ahead and started making a little side deal with counsel, and let me just finish, please, that said, allow us to pay you later, because the taxpayers are always going to pay us in the end, so our credit's good. God knows what interest we're paying, if any, and we will eventually end up paying you. My biggest argument with that is, that should be done in front of the public, it should be done through an amended budget hearing, which by law you're required to do. You understand that, Ted?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm wondering what evidence you have.
Okay, well, I'll ask you a question. Did you guys do an amended budget hearing in 2022 for 2022 budget?
Yes, we did, but...
Well, wait, wait, wait. What day, if you, do you remember?
No, I'm sorry, you said an amended budget?
An amended budget hearing?
I don't recall that.
Okay, you're spending our money.
But at the same time, I don't recall a side deal with any attorney, especially our attorney.
Okay. Larry came to a meeting, it was in one of his meeting minutes here, I think in April or May of 2022, where he said, the attorneys, we don't have them waiting to pay our attorneys. And the attorneys have agreed to go ahead and allow us to make $5,000 a month payments as we get the money in. Do you remember that? Larry, do you remember it?
Yes, I.
Okay, so he remembers it. So do you at least understand what I'm saying? There's a deal there that was made where there's...
And so what's wrong with that? I mean, you buy a house for $500,000, you pay the bank in equivalent.
Okay, okay, I'll answer your question. First of all, if you're buying the house with your money, you can do anything you want. But when you're using the public's money, you're required to go ahead and, if you're going to deviate from your budget, you're required to go ahead and advertise and hold a public hearing to amend your budget. So we can come like we are tonight and be heard, and like, what is going on? Why are you mending your budget? Oh, you're going to spend $193,000 funding Mr. Carey? Wait a second, looks like over here, he agreed to settle this thing for $5,000, if you just admit liability and apologize.
We had, at the beginning, Mr. Carey, we had no clue where this was going.
Well, that doesn't excuse the fact that you omitted the amended budget hearing. And that's what I'm arguing here. In other words, you guys, under the Open Public Meetings Act, when you hold a budget hearing, you approve your budget. If you're going to deviate from that, then you're required to go ahead. You just can't start making deals with counsel, say, we're going to spend way more than we budgeted for, but we're going to pay you into 200...
We had no idea what the end amount was.
I'm not, listen, you had no idea, what you just said, no idea you're going to spend that kind of money. But when it became clear you started spending that, you have to hold above it a public hearing to amend your budget.
This is a public hearing about our 2024 budget.
That's right, that's why we're here.
It's not a rehash of the lawsuit.
Well, no, we're not, first of all, excuse me, Mr. Director, but you introduced the lawsuit into your budget narrative.
Now, be, please, you will get your time.
It is a hearing on this budget.
Yes.
So if he doesn't have questions about this budget, it's time for him to sit down.
Well, I'm sorry, but Mr. Capola doesn't know the law, and he doesn't make the law. So let me be clear. You can do what you want, but I'm making myself very clear. Number one, we are on subject matter. Mr. Capola introduced into his narrative in writing, Mr. Carey's lawsuit by name as the reason the budget's got a problem. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So we're talking about Mr. Carey's lawsuit. I'm sorry, Mr. Capola, but you made a fair game when you put it in there. Now, let me finish what I'm saying so we can wrap this up.
Brad, you're getting more and more upset.
No, I'm not, listen, I'm not upset.
Your time's way up.
But there's so many others that do want to talk.
Okay, let's back up for a second. Mr. Capola, how much time do you think we're allowed in a public hearing?
As much as the chair decides.
Okay, would you please explain to Mr. Capola the law?
You have spoken for 25 minutes.
Would you please explain to Mr. Capola the law in the hearing?
Well, it is open, but I think out of caring for the rest of the community, you do need to kind of convince what you're saying, Brad.
Absolutely. So this is the big deal.
And you have put us in a, you know, you're trying to call us down on things. We've always been open, and the things that you're talking about is not true.
Let me ask the question.
But we have been accountable.
Would you please amend the director's narrative?
I'm going to...
Excuse me, Mr. Capola, you're being disrespectful. Would you please amend the director's narrative to say that the reason that 2020...
Well, no, personally, I'm not going to change that.
Let me just finish, please. Then I'd like the record to show that Mr. Carey is saying that the reason that the 2022 budget and now 2023 budget is way out of whack or tight, in Mr. Capola's words, is the fact that the commission violated the Public Records Act, the Open Public Meetings Act, and our civil rights, and admitted to it, admitted to liability all three of those in June 9th, 2022 settlement, and somehow failed to put that as the reason for being, having the budget way out of whack. In other words, we shouldn't be blamed, we shouldn't be at fault for holding our public officials accountable, should we? I mean, if we have to sue to get the records, isn't that what we're supposed to do? Yes? And so, but we're being blamed for the budget's financial... And so, but we're being blamed for the budget's financial woes. I'm saying that's wrong.
Do you have questions about the 2023 budget?
Yes, I do, and that's...
Please get to it.
Both of them. So my question is this, is that what is the port going to do for 2023 and before 2022 is over, as far as getting their budget to comply with this special hearing you have to amend your budget and also to keep itself from getting tied up in the public records litigation, the Open Public Meetings Act litigation and civil rights violations? In other words, what is it going to do this next year to prevent that? Because I'm going to be back.
Well, we know that you're a predatory litigator.
Okay.
So that is, that is something that we are expecting and we are trying to gear up for that.
Okay, what is a predatory litigator?
Well, you know what a predator is? They, they take advantage of groups or people. And litigator is, matter of fact, thank you for clarifying that because when I mentioned that before, you clarified what that was, so...
I'd asked if you'd read any of my lawsuits and you said, no. I asked if you spoke to any of the defendants and you said, no.
Well, I'm not here to argue about that.
That's what we talked about last time, you brought it up.
Let's go ahead and talk about the 2023 budget.
My question is this, you've just said I was a predatory litigator and to me, that underlies the problem. In other words, I don't want to have to get involved. But if we can't find out the information that we need, Mr. Jackson, if we're asking questions and we can't get those answered in a general meeting and then we're forced to ask for the public records to answer those questions, what is it you want us to do? How are we supposed to learn what's going on so we can hold you accountable? If you agree with the concept that it is our job...
Well, most people get their public records, they get their questions answered, of which you had. Most people are satisfied with what, what the process and what getting those records are. They, they come to the full understanding of what it is. But it was evident to me and to us that you will try to make sure that there is some kind of litigation that is possible and then that's what you do.
But do you understand how that makes me feel because I know that's not true? In other words, I asked for the documents, I couldn't give them. I even said, I'm going to have to sue you in 10 days if you don't give them to me.
Excuse me, I'm the public records officer. And yes, I've offered you to come in the office several times and help me find what you wanted.
And did I try to come in and you said, well, it's on COVID, didn't you?
No, I didn't.
So here we go. So let me ask the question, Judy, as an example. In other words, you're basically saying that I'm the problem and not the port. Is that what I hear you saying? I'm a predatory litigator?
We're always open to correction, Brad, that's not true.
So let me ask the question this way. Would you, would you agree then that the port, when it signed the June 9th, 2022 settlement agreement where it admitted to liability, that we did the right thing in holding the port accountable?
I don't know about that because I think we've always, we've done our best to try to be correct in everything that we do.
So why did you sign the document? It's not a laughing matter, it's $193,000. If you could have settled for five...
We're not supposed to talk about it.
First of all, he brought it up, I'm sorry, but your director brought it up.
I am not going to bring it up. We weren't supposed to talk about it.
Well, let the record show then this in closing, that the port had 12 months to answer our questions, they chose not to. The port then had probably at least three or four weeks to provide us with public records, they chose not to. The port was placed on notice, including its counsel, that it would be sued if it wouldn't give us the one record we wanted, which was Washington Water cease and desist letter, and they chose not to. So let the record show then that we had to have two other parties ask for the same public records and then within 12 hours, we all had the document in our inbox. And then let the record show that right after the port was sued, we said, we'll settle it for $5,000. That doesn't sound like a predatory litigator to me. And the port chose not to go ahead and settle. It chose to fight with money it didn't have. That to me is a budget, budget issue that the port needs to really, well, it's just totally unacceptable. You guys spent $193,000 when you could have spent $5,000, plus the $30,000 you're paying me.
Okay, well, get to the point.
That's the point. The point is, you're exercising court judgment. And so I want to hear tonight what it is you're going to do before we spend our money with you in taxes on how you're going to keep that from happening in the future. So I don't have to take my time and hold you accountable. So what are you guys going to do different? Because you just spent $195,000.
Again, you're going back to the lawsuit.
Okay, I'll answer it for you. What we're going to do is we're going to take training. Who's we? We being you, I'm pretending I'm you now. We're, since you don't want to answer. We screwed up, we, the port, screwed up when we wouldn't answer your questions, we could have simply asked them and we wouldn't have had to give you records. Then we screwed up when we wouldn't give you records. Then we screwed up when we wouldn't give you the specific document when you threatened to sue us if we didn't get it. We ended up having to give it to you anyway. And then we screwed up again with the public's purse when we didn't go ahead and settle the lawsuit for $5,000 with an admission and apology, which we ended up ultimately doing on June 9th a year later.
Well, I disagree, it's not true, but it's time that you sit down.
Well, the numbers, listen, thank you for your time.
Debbie, do you have anything you'd like to share?
No.
Okay. Ken?
Thank you, Nancy.
Ken, I have no comment at this time. My audio was terrible, so I had to watch the meeting, or the watch the meeting.
Who is on? Can you see who's on?
Yeah.
I had terrible audio.
I forgot. Excuse me, I forgot, Harold Carey.
Okay. Okay, Ken, thank you for waiting.
Is he trying to talk?
I think he is.
Well, he just said he couldn't hear, but he hasn't raised a question or anything yet, so...
He might not know how to do that.
Okay, go ahead, but Ken has the floor.
Okay. Thank you. Ken Van Busker from Belfair. This morning, I talked with Mr. Jeff Kerry about the budget because I had some questions about things and he's pretty, he's been following us for quite a while and we couldn't reconcile the different budget documents that we found online. He pulled up a document at exactly the same time I did and this particular one is on page three of your budget and it regards legal and attorney fees. The document that Brad was looking at had a year-to-date, 2022 year-to-date of $150,000.
Excuse me for interrupting, but we're not getting any audio at all. I can't, I can't make out a word, so if he has a mic or something, you can hear. You just can't hear.
Okay, good. The audio is...
Sorry, sorry.
Oh. Unless I leave my computer, everybody else can hear.
So which computer, it's that one?
It's that one.
So we just push the switch?
If I push, no.
No. Meaning?
I can do this.
Ken, if you...
Go ahead, go ahead, that's what we have.
Okay.
So Ken, talk loud and talk into that computer.
Echo might be a bit disturbing, so if it's all right, I'll start over.
Well, Ken?
Yeah.
Those aren't working. What Diedrich is saying is, talk into that, towards that computer.
Okay.
Because that's where the sound is coming to.
Can you hear me, Mr. Kerry?
Can you hear again?
He's got the hearing.
Okay.
I can hear a grugling voice.
Voice, okay. Is it all right if I start over?
Sure.
Okay, I talked to Mr. Jeff Kerry this morning about the budget and on page three, there's a borrower's item regarding legal and attorney fees. And the document that Jeff pulled up at exactly the same time I pulled up on the website, his showed a year-to-date of $150,448 spent on legal attorney fees. That was a document that I saw about at the last budget meeting, I believe, but Jeff pulled it up and it looks like it's still online or something. That's $150,448, that was about a month ago. Currently, it shows $60,948 year-to-date. That's a huge difference and I can't, I can't understand how that would happen. Can you tell me how it might have happened?
Page three. Larry, do you have comment here?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
No, because I'm not, I don't find it.
Legal and attorney's fees in year-to-date in 2022 are $60,948.
That, that is the document?
There it is, okay.
Before you receive, but last month at the preliminary budget hearing, there was a document that showed year-to-date of $150,448.
That was what we owed?
Yeah, but there was in '21.
Yeah. But $60,948 is correct.
Say that again.
$60,948 is correct.
In '22.
In '22.
So can you, I just want you to understand the document that I was looking at a month ago, the same one that Mr. Kerry was looking at this morning, shows $150,948. And then now, I hear, just now, that it's $195,000.
It's, it's $135,000.
That's our top word.
It was negotiated down and I explained that to Mr. Kerry as he's struggling and interrupting me. Is that, it started off as $195,000, it was negotiated down to $135,000.
At the last budget.
Yeah.
The site.
The first draft.
The first draft.
And I'm looking for that last...
You're talking about the first draft, though, correct?
Yeah, the first draft. If that, if that first draft was accurate, it showed $150,000 spent year-to-date, was it not accurate? Somebody filled it out.
I'm going to have to look and see if I can find that document.
I got it.
Okay.
So you can see why I'm a little perplexed as to the budget. And regarding the negotiation of the $195,000 down to whatever currently is... Who, who did that negotiation? Was it Mr. Capola?
Mr. Capola, yes.
And he did that with the commission's authorization?
Yes.
Okay. When did that authorization happen?
He just used...
Was it in a public meeting?
Oh, okay. So that's the difference.
Do you recall?
So...
When you authorized Mr. Capola to negotiate?
I don't have that document.
Do you want me to send it to you?
Yeah.
I'm going to send it, Ken, go ahead.
When you, when you authorized Mr. Capola to negotiate with the attorney, when did, when did you do that? In an open public meeting or in a special session?
Well, he has the authority to do that, so we...
On his own.
Yeah.
But you authorized.
But we did it in an executive session.
Yes.
He just told me, get the best deal I can.
Well, you did that in, and what was...
Executive session on litigation.
That, okay, executive session. So that must have been one of the two executive sessions you held in the last month and you said it was just about litigation. So was this necessarily about litigation?
Yeah, cost of litigation.
I think it was about legal fees, it wasn't about litigation.
That's the cost of litigation.
Okay, well, at least I discovered, I discovered what happened there, so... So right now, what has actually been spent year-to-date on litigation is the $60,948? Okay.
Yes, the one, she just explained to me that she had, it had, that document that you saw was actually all, he took in what we owed and so that really wasn't correct type.
For a year-to-date.
Yeah, for a year-to-date.
Did you talk about it at the preliminary budget hearing?
No.
I don't recall.
No.
Okay, well, that's a big chunk of change.
Yeah, it is.
Something that probably should have been talked about in an open session.
Yes, that is. See, we do admit wrong.
So on page, page seven.
And that was, we're going to have to figure it out.
Yeah.
On page seven of the budget, the water budget, I had a couple of questions there. You have, the first thing, their administrative fees at the top.
October 24th is when that was.
October 24th, pardon me? What is October 24th?
That's when the executive session was held.
I think I had the floor, but I'm glad you, October 24th, thank you. So back to the, the water budget, if I can. What is administrative fees?
Would you like me to explain?
Under revenue, under revenue.
Yeah. That's a fee that we add onto the hookup fees, water, water tapping fees, meter sales, everything, everything that generates revenue except for customer water payments gets a 15% administrative fee.
So that's actually a revenue?
Yes.
And it comes from the ratepayers?
No, the ratepayers don't pay it. I said it's on everything except customer water payments. Water meter sales, hookup fees, line tap fees, bulk water sales. You know, those are all fees that are usually incurred by developers.
So administrative fees?
And it's written in our policies and procedures for the water system.
Okay, I just have not seen it before and I wasn't familiar with policy and procedures.
But yes, it is a revenue source.
Oh, I was going to ask, shouldn't it show up under expenses if it was an administrative fee? But it is under revenue, okay. Customer water payments, the next line down, 22 year-to-date is $24,000 and this is another item that Jeff looked at at the same time I did. His showed for the 23 budget, a figure of $31,744 and the document I was looking at shows $46,964. That's the one probably in front of you as well.
What that is, the 46,964, that is, what we did is took the amount that has been paid year-to-date, divided it by the number of months and the number of customers, got an average, multiplied it by, took that number and then added 12 more customers because if you look at connection fees, we have 12 of those and we figured 12 new customers and we just did the math for what the average per customer was and added 12 to it, multiplied it by the year.
Okay. Thank you. Under account receivable in the water budget, the third from the bottom there, what is this?
Those are connection fees and administrative fees and interest fees that are owed to us.
$123,598 to date?
Yes.
And you said, aren't those the hookup fees?
Those are a combination of hookup fees, interest, administrative fees, water meter sales.
So.
You know, everything that, that, that a developer has to pay, it's an accumulation of them from one developer.
So, so from one, so from the development group, they're paying hookup fees of $83,000 up above there, and then another $123,000 under accounts receivable?
Uh, we don't know that the same developer is gonna pay the hookup fees up above. It could be anybody, we just, because we've had several developers that, working in there that we've, worked with, and we just took 12 connections, whoever the developer might be.
It seems like a big number.
It is a big number.
And then my, my last question about the, the water budget is, tonight, later on, you're looking at possible acquisition of the Carey Water System. Where is that in the budget?
It's not in the budget because it's gonna come from a loan from the Department of Health, Office of Drinking Water. They will fund the consolidation of smaller water systems into larger ones.
And it, shouldn't it be addressed in the budget as a receipt? Because don't you have to pay half of it back?
Once the, uh, the acquisition is complete and integrated, they have the option of forgiving the other half, and they generally do that. So, we didn't see any reason to put it in here, not knowing if we were gonna have to deal with it or not. And the, when it's all said and done, it shouldn't cost us anything.
Oh, in your directors.
And, if we have to, we can take it out of the grant that we've got. We have two grants for the, the new well. And since we're gonna be integrating the two systems, if we had to, we could take it out of that money as well.
So in your narrative, you talk about having to pay half of it back, so that's not necessarily true.
We don't know if it is or it isn't, you know? Again, that's a worst-case scenario where, you know, we budget revenue conservatively and expenses liberally. So, but that's just an unknown at this point.
Okay, in, in, in lines with the, the acquisition of the Carey's Water System, are the commissioners planning to openly discuss the acquisition before they approve the memorandum of understanding or whatever it is they intend to do?
Well, we're gonna read the, read it and talk about it, yeah.
You are gonna discuss it?
Yeah, that's the plan.
Openly in this public meeting, okay. And then my very last question is on page eight, Sweetwater Expenditure. You have, at the bottom there, expenses, $6,122, year-to-date. And that appears to be over budget of $5,000. And I assume that includes the survey, the blocks, the arborist, Mr. Lefner, and that was a total of $6,122.
That's correct.
So, how are you doing that makeup of that, uh, thousand?
It came out of the general fund. We spent the $5,000 that was in, in there last year that I would like to remind you that you told us we shouldn't even put in there.
Well, that, that's the recommendation I'm planning to make again, so.
But, uh, be that as it may, it was a good thing that we did put it in there.
Okay. Well, that concludes my questions. Now I have some recommendations for you folks in regards to the budget. Uh, I'd like to suggest that you advertise for and hire an executive director sooner rather than later this next year. I would also suggest that you advertise the executive director position with a salary cap of $50,000 to $60,000.
You'll get a sole apply.
All apply.
Excuse me, sir?
You'll get a qualified.
Are you gonna let him continue to interrupt my discussion? I think you should hire a different legal firm. I think you should discontinue the involvement with the Sweetwater project until Warstot does the Highway 3 height widening and possible reclamation of the Sweetwater Creek. And lastly, I'd like to talk a little bit about what Mr. Brad Carey mentioned earlier. In tonight's budget narrative, there were several references to the Carey lawsuit in the written portion, but when Mr. Capola read it, he took the Carey name out of it. I don't know if you picked up on it, but I did. And he also quoted in there that charges were made by one individual, that he didn't say that tonight either, regarding the general fund subsidizing the water system. I'm a member of the public, and to me, those statements are disparaging and damaging to Mr. Carey's reputation. And I would suggest again that you seek mediation with Mr. Carey immediately. Thank you for your time, thank you for your answers.
Thank you. First, Debbie, did you, no, you didn't wanna say that, okay?
Just one quick, one quick comment.
No?
Okay, okay, look.
It's because your dad can't hear, that's why.
Okay, can you hear me, Dad?
Okay.
I said, I've got hearing aids, and that wasn't very good. Okay.
Yeah, I, I, I hear.
Okay. So, look. We have an agreement between Mr. Carey, Brad Carey and the court. I've brought to you my concerns about that in this budget because it was raised in the budget narrative. Now, I don't wanna get this 2023 budget going sideways on us. I want the court to succeed. But tonight, Ted, can you hear me?
Excuse me.
Yeah.
Okay. Tonight, Ted, she said, in violation of that agreement, that I was a predatory litigator. Now, I'm gonna.
Didn't violate.
Let, let, excuse me, Mr. Capola, I'm gonna make myself real clear here. This is the one chance that this court can get out of the litigation. I'm gonna ask you to retract what you said, apologize for calling me a predatory litigator, discouraging my reputation in public. And I will not take any action, ask my attorney to go ahead and implement the provision that triggers you paying me $10,000 and resume the litigation. So, please, I'm not trying to put you on the spot. You said it, I, I'm sorry, I made you say it, I didn't try to make you say it. So please, can we just learn to get along? Can you retract what you said because I find that statement offensive? Plus, it trickles out into the public, and then people think I'm a predatory litigator, and that hurts me. And I don't appreciate it. I'm putting my time and my treasure, and my family's time and treasure on the line, and my friends' time and treasure, and the fire department's time and treasure, and all these other places that we volunteer our time for, putting those things aside to spend time to hold this court accountable. And I think what you said was absolutely disparaging, there's no need for it, and it just puts gas on the fire. And plus, you bound my agreement not to say it, so please, do us all a favor. Apologize, retract it, and we'll forget, move on.
Okay, consider it, retract it.
Can I hear you apologize, please?
I'm sorry.
Okay, apology accepted, thank you.
Sure. Can, are we done?
That's my.
Okay.
Close the public hearing.
Okay. Public hearing?
Was there anybody up there?
Thank you. John, Commissioner Sheridan, did you have anything you wanted to share or question?
No, I'm, I'm, I'm following it real well.
Okay.
As you know, I'm not feeling real good, so, um, I, um, there's no reason for me to, to provide any more dialogue, so thank you.
Okay, anybody else have any comment? Okay, seeing none, the public hearing will be closed, and now that, we will resume the special meeting. Okay.
Can I say it?
Yep. Um, next we will, um, we did the budget hearing. Now we can go to the approval of the 1% property tax increase. Yes, there is. I'm trying to find, I don't have it here. I don't think, is, is it in here? No.
It was added into the general revenue. In the budget, it was the amount of property tax we get plus the 1% plus, so we had a carryover that was included and construction. Construction was separate line item, I'm sorry.
So, in other words, when we approve, or if we approve the budget, then it is included, the 1% tax increase?
Yes, it did, but you still have to approve the 1% separately.
Okay, but there's not a resolution for that?
No, and there doesn't need to be.
Okay. So, do I hear a motion for the allowable 1% property tax increase?
I'll make a motion to approve 1%.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, so moved. Okay, next is the approval of the Resolution 2022-014, adoption of the 2023 budget. Any questions on that, commissioners? Any comments?
I don't have any comments.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
Do you want me to read the resolution?
Sure.
Would you like me to read the resolution? Resolution 2022-014, be resolved by the Commissioners of the Port of Allen as follows. The Board of Commissioners of the Port of Ma, Allen have met and considered the proposed budget for the 2023 calendar year. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners, after public hearing and duly considering all relevant evidence and testimony presented, hereby resolves to adopt the budget for 2023 calendar year as proposed and presented.
Okay. Has it been seconded? Do I hear a second?
Seconded.
Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Okay, so moved on that one. There is a voucher for the payment for the geo engineers for the Sergeant Oyster House?
This was for them straightening out the RV cord permit?
Yes.
And getting the hydraulic permits renewed and changed over.
Right. And that was for, um, $14,449.07, of which comes out of the grant.
It will come out of the grant, yes.
Okay, so do I hear a motion to approve the voucher for geo engineers for Sergeant Oyster House?
Yeah, I'll make a motion, uh, to approve that, the Oyster House.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
So moved. Now we're at the memorandum for the.
This is to acquire Yerick Utilities, it should say acquisition of the Allen and Carey Community Water System. I didn't change it here, but I did change it in the agreement.
Yeah, I have a copy of the updated one.
And Jeff and I spent time on the phone several times today. This was the final agreement that we hammered out, and he agreed to.
Okay. Debbie, do you have comments that you'd like to say before we talk about this?
What I was concerned about is how you made it, your utilities. Your utilities, it's not your utilities.
Yeah, we changed it all.
It's Jeff and Debbie Carey.
Yes.
Yes, okay.
We have that in this one.
Yeah, do you need a copy of it? I sent one to Jeff.
I have a copy of that one.
Okay. Well, I sent it to Jeff, but I'm happy to give you my copy for him.
Well, with the correction?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, because the one he gave me does not have the correction.
Okay, this is the final, if you wanna just compare them.
So, Larry, would you like to explain a little bit about this, um, the sale price and how you came up with that?
Sure. Let me, uh.
You and Jeff.
Let me get it up here.
Okay.
I gotta find the final version.
Sure.
What happens when I unhook my computer from the big screen in on my desk? It puts my icons all over the. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, well, then I don't have to go find it. Uh, Jeff and I agreed on a price. Until we get our new well in, we're going to lease his existing well for 18 months with an option to renew for two other years, but we shouldn't probably, by 18 months, I'm hoping we're done here, if that long. But we do have an option to extend it. And that way, it'll service all of his customers as well as ours. We'll do inter ties with the, the lines, so, you know, everybody's got equal pressure. Uh, his well will also help us equalize the pressure to the, uh, houses up above between his well and the water tank. That'll help us give them better pressure. And until we get the new well and they get the booster pumps in, so. Anyway, in the event of an equipment failure, the court agrees to pay half the cost of replacement or repair. Jeff and his subcontractors will perform the repairs at cost and provide the court with receipts for everything that gets done. Jeff made six connections to Cedarland Construction, so they could sell and close those houses, but he didn't connect the, didn't collect the connection fees. We are entitled to collect those, and, uh, those are part of that accounts receivable.
Yeah.
Along with the tapping and administrative fees and all that, we're allowed to collect all of that, and that's all part of that accounts receivable. Plus, there's some that are, where Jeff has lines in front of them that are under construction now, and those are our fees to collect as well. Uh, the Austin Drinking Water loaned the court the money to fund the purchase. When will fund, how much will it fund, is the only unknown at this point. They agree to defer any additional payments that may become due until mutually agreeable time in 2023, and they're willing to sign a purchase and sale agreement with no loan money due until the actual loan funds. Excuse me. Jeff has also agreed to, or Jeff and Debbie have also agreed to accommodate our cash flow situation in mutually agreeable interest-free payment schedule for the first 12 months with a fine year amortization if the loan doesn't fund and close before April 1st, but it should. This is the principal agreement, it will be superseded by a formal purchase and sale agreement once everything has been addressed and, you know, we have a little more certainty about a couple of things. But this is what we need, we need to have something signed to send to the Department of Health Drinking Water.
Yeah.
Whatever it's called.
Mm-hmm.
By the end of this month. And I don't know that we're gonna get a purchase and sale agreement approved by you all before then, you know, without having a special meeting. So, but, uh, this, this will suffice for what we need to do to, you know, get the loan processed. And, and approved, so.
Okay. Any other questions? Commissioner Sheridan, any questions?
No, it's, it's pretty straightforward. Like, uh, what it speaks through is any formal agreement superseded, this is a really good step. I'm good with this.
Okay, Jeff, Commissioner Jackson?
I have, no.
Okay.
Yeah, we have a draft, uh, purchase and sale agreement that our attorney sent us. But it's boilerplate, I've gotta, like, fill it all in, it's just cheaper for me to do it than him, so.
Yeah, okay.
So I'll be working on that the rest of this week.
Ken, did you wanna make a comment?
Sorry, I missed the discussion, so that's all right.
Okay.
Yeah, I wasn't sure what you were talking about, so that's all right, go ahead.
We're talking about the water system, this is a memorandum of agreement, it's not the purchase and sale. Just so that you know.
Did you change the agenda?
No, we're on, we're on the acquiring, it says Yerick Utilities, but it's actually the.
Allen Water System.
Yeah, Jeff and Debbie Carey, DBA, Allen. Yeah, Jeff and Debbie Carey, DBA, Allen and Kerry Water System.
Okay, so you did all these other.
Yes.
Yeah, no, it's all right.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
I'll make.
Sure.
I'll make that, oh, no, excuse me.
It is on line.
I'll make that, uh, uh, motion to approve this memorandum agreement to acquire Yerick Utilities.
I'll second.
That's agreed upon, okay.
Okay, it is a correction, just so that you know, the, the actual one is Jeff and Debbie Carey, DBA, Allen and Kerry Community Water System. It is a memorandum of agreement. Price, sale price is what we've agreed is seventy-one thousand eight hundred. Okay.
Yes.
I hear the motion in a second?
Yes, I'll second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
So moved.
It's been a long time coming.
Yeah.
Jeff and I have been back and forth for, I don't know, how many months? Been a while, so.
Okay, we are now on the updated employees' policy. I've had a chance to look at it and all the changes, you know, that were recommended by our attorney. Commissioner Sheridan, do you have anything?
No, I do not.
Commissioner Jackson, any, any comments?
No.
Concerns?
Yeah, the only changes that were made were the ones that the attorneys recommended to comply with federal law. We didn't make any other changes.
Which have to do with the family leave now, which are, are new.
Right.
Okay. So do I hear a motion to accept the updated employee policies?
I'll make a motion to approve the updated employee policies.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second, I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
So moved. Okay, anything else for the good of the order? No? Hearing none, motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
I'll second, I'll second that.
All right. Motion to adjourn. All say aye, aye, and thank you very much for attending.